To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming. We have a little bit of business transacting, so we'll get up as quickly as we can. Approval of minutes from the 7th.
I don't think you would see it.
I would think I would.
That's okay, I will make a motion. We approve the minutes for August, or from, yeah, for the 7th.
So we'll move to the second to approve the August 7th amendments as presented. All in favor, say aye. All right. All right, next up we have payroll, the amount of $221,583.30.
I'll second that.
Moving to the second to approve payroll, the amount of $221,583.30. All in favor, say aye.
I've got the one that says side.
Oh, you don't get that one.
I'm running out of space, I'm gonna pile here. If you want her to quit bringing me crack, it'd be okay.
I could start just throwing it a little.
Yes, you could, yeah. All right, then we need to approve, I acknowledge receiving payroll claims the council paid with reported, an amount of $224,555.95.
I'll make a motion, acknowledging receiving payroll claims, the amount $224,555.95.
All in favor, say aye.
Now, attached to that is the report, the monthly report that goes with it, pay, payroll taken together.
Okay, then we have claims, an amount of $1,244,331.11.
And the month, that tells us that the monthly report is behind, paperclip behind there.
Okay.
Asphalt materials, $62,000.
The driveway, $77,000.
That's right, what they estimate is $75, because we add a little bit to it, and it's $75, then we add the park up there with the truck parks.
And it came in at 71, it was lower than what they estimated.
Good, good.
I'll make a motion, we approve claims, the amount of $1,244,331.11.
All in favor, say aye. All right, you have any outside checks? Okay, we're ready to go to old business. Jessica, or however you do it, the pay, I just wanted to reiterate again today, you know, we had a calling for anybody who wasn't served by internet, to contact somebody, let them know, that deadline is Friday, so about the time your paper, well, I guess your paper comes out Wednesday, well, you've got till Friday to call her, otherwise that won't be included. I don't know how you want to express it, but that doesn't mean if you have, in your case, for example, satellite, and you're happy with that, we just need to know if there is a line coming from the internet into your house, doesn't mean you have to use it, but do you have access to internet at your house? If you don't, we need to know that, so we make sure we get that included on the map for the state of under and unserved areas. The reason that is, just so you know, background on it, the, they put out maps for a long time showing areas that were served, that were not served, areas of Park County, that the map shows, ATD, and the map show that they were served, they were not. And so the state finally said, you know, you keep doing these things, saying these things, so here's your opportunity, give us a list of addresses that are not served, that are within those maps, and that's what's been working on. And the council with Roy, and the commissioners, and Cindy, they've been working very hard on, trying to get all of it that we can. So they gave us until this Friday to get that list completed, so if they can contact Cindy at Partnership Park County, and that's the place for that number to go, and that'd be the last opportunity. Doesn't mean you can't get it at some point, it just means you won't be on that map showing that you're unserved.
Okay, we did get that in last week's paper, it won't be this week's, because the pages are already gone, but I can get it on Facebook.
Oh, that'd be great, that'd be great. One, one last, one last chance there to get it out. Because I'm just, you just know some people are gonna be missed, they're just not gonna see, they're not gonna be aware, how they go about that, and it's gonna be too late. But all we can do is put the board out there, we can't go to every house, call everybody, they're not gonna call in. And, and it may sound silly to put it on Facebook, but a lot of people have Facebook on their phones and stuff without having internet access, so that's a fine place to put that, and I have, I mentioned it, I've had several TV interviews of different things, but I've always mentioned that, so I don't know how much more exposure you get trying to get info out there, but I just wanted you to back around on how that, how it was working. We had, well, that'd be, that'd be new business, we'll get to that again here. I don't think I have any old business, let me see, you guys have any old business to bring up? Let me see here real quickly. If I don't check, I'll check it at home, and I wish I had done it here.
I can't think of any thing that we left hanging, except for Amanda, she's coming up here in a little bit.
Your own old business?
That's cool, I'm not gonna bet. Yeah. He's old, it's the grandma status.
All right, I don't see anything here, okay. So let's go to new business, then I have a couple things, then we'll get to the other stuff. Just for your information, you guys, we talked budget this last time, and so we talked about commissioner pay, if nobody, don't know, commissioners get paid $10,700 a year. That is the next to the lowest pay in the state. The lowest is just right at $1,000, less than this, but it's a county of half our population. And the category of counties of 15,000 to 20,000, and that's the way those are divided by county population, our $10,700 is $7,000 less than the next county above us, up to where somewhere twice. And so I've talked with some members of the council, and I'm not, I'm not interested, you guys may be, and that's okay, I'm not interested in raising that during my time in the term, in term, I don't want to look like it's pay raise for me, but I think if you're going to entice people, or get people to come and do the work involved with being a commissioner, the responsibility is to go along with that. I don't think there's much reason for a county of our size, which we're kind of an average as far as geographic areas, we're certainly large, and population wise, we are not by any means the smallest counties in the, in the state, but to be half the pay of all the other commissioners, probably a silly, silly place to be. Rightfully, to know the council is in the same boat, so the council is, only has two counties that are lower in pay than the Park County Council. So those are all things to be considered, if we're going to be restructuring other things, then the county probably needs to consider restructuring those positions as well. We've looked multiple times about restructuring for pay for the employees, we did so last year with the highway department, tried to get them to be in a, in a, in the same place as every other county, or at least, not the least, don't have to be the highest pay, don't have to be, shouldn't be the bottom pay, somewhere in the middle, so we take care of that. We all know about, all the other departments are low paid, but we just need to keep working on those, get, get what we can. The tough part always is, is just, only 17,000 people to help pay for those things outside of property taxes, so, income tax, and we have every local option, income tax, I think, that's available, I think we have them all now, to try to, try to pursue those things. Yeah, I think we do. So, it's just a, it's just a continuing struggle, but I wouldn't want to make that clear, that I'm not interested in doing that during my final term here, if this isn't my final term as I expect it to be, but I think going into the next round of commissioners, we should look at creating something that has a new pay scale for new people coming into the office. Congress works that way, if you didn't know that, Congress can pass pay raises, and everybody talks about Congress passing the pay raises for themselves, that's just not true. Congress is not allowed to make a, a pay increase for any congressional member until he has stood for reelection, and then once he's stood for reelection, being reelected, then he gets the new pay. But even if they passed today, a new pay scale for Congress, Congress don't get it until they've been reelected at a different time. Most people don't know that, but that's how that works, they can't vote themselves, they can vote to position pay raises, but they have to be elected to that new position to get that new pay. All right, the only other thing I think I have, as far as business that I'm aware of, if, if, you guys, are you aware that we had a bridge damaged, West Union? A truck hit a bridge, it's on River Road, it's just down the hill, if you're coming from West Union, from Leinbarger Chapel, going toward Montezuma, and you go straight at the intersection, and you go down over the hill, down to the bottoms, where the bottom man's all the right inside, there's a bridge there, a concrete bridge, actually a culvert, but it's a pretty big one. It was hit hard enough to knock the bottom, the underneath carriage out of the truck, and it broke the entire side off, the support, angle iron along the side, and broke both wing walls on the, on the side, so it was, it was hit hard.
So it hit pretty good.
He was not, on location, he left, left the scene, but I understand, and I'll talk to Sheriff, if he gets here, I think they know who it is, doesn't mean they have insurance or not, but the new piece has been ordered, it's a pretty critical bridge, because when harvest comes, they're gonna need to get out of the bottom to get to where they need to get, and so it's gonna be critical to get that done. Randy immediately ordered the piece, there's gonna be a D pipe, replace it with, 50 feet probably, and that, the pipe's big enough to be 11 feet, but of course, it's underground part, so the bridge right over the road is about 10 feet or so. Typical cost of that, doesn't mean it's gonna be now, because of course, prices are going up on everything, to structure itself is around 20,000 typically, does that sound right to you, ballpark, what those are? And so as soon as you get to the end, that'd be priority number one, so, again, Jessica, you know, we need, we need to tell, you watch what's put in paper, but I know there's gonna be some farmers concerned about that bridge being out. If you don't mind emphasizing that, parts have been ordered, we're gonna make every effort to get that back in shape before, before harvest comes, we hope to have it back in place within a month, but there's no, it's, we don't control any part of that. We'll put it in as soon as we get it, but we control no part of that supply chain getting it here, so we'll try to get that done as best we can.
So that bridge is closed, right?
It's closed, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's lane, lane and creek, oh, the creek's dry, but it's lane and hollow there, so it's a, it's a mess. I don't know how the guy survived, but he must have, so, I mean, he had to hit that really, really hard. And that's all the new business I got, you guys got anything to bring up?
You have that ordinance?
Oh, yes we do, yes we do, we have an ordinance for the covered bridge vessel involving alcohol sales, as you know, the policy has always been for Park County to, to not permit transient merchant, merchants to sell alcohol off site. Let me explain real quickly how transient merchant license works, in case you have a question on that. Transient merchant license requires that a person has a retail merchant certificate, on that retail merchant certificate is the address of the location of their retail merchant certificate. Transient merchant license is a permit permitted by the state that says that business, say it's me, where I have maple syrup, my retail merchant certificate has my address listed. If I want to sell maple syrup at the covered bridge festival, I am now doing business as a transient, because I'm not selling from my location, I'm selling from this location in Rockville. So to be able to do so, I have to get a transient merchant license from the county to do that. There are some exceptions on fees, but there is no exception on whether you get the TML or not. If you are a not-for-profit, if you are a veteran, if you make a qualified handcrafted item, or grow a, a handcrafted item for sale, then you can be exempted from that $100 fee, all others have to pay that $100 fee. However, even though you pay the $100 fee, and you qualify as trying to set up and sell a product at a, at a transient site, there is no requirement by the state that you be issued one, because the statute says very clearly that after that application has been submitted, even if it is all proper and fees have been offered, the county is, county government is not required, the county may issue the transient merchant license at that point. I think the only thing that we don't permit sales, and boy, this was a big thing here a few years ago, I'm not sure what year it was even, that we had, we allowed the family wineries to set up. Family wineries is a craft to me, and these guys are raising this themselves, making their own products, offering their own product for sale. And so we worked very hard over a couple of years, and there was a lot of people in the county really opposed, we had really involved crowded meetings for that kind of thing, to finally get that approved. What is not approved with that is they can't sell wine by the glass at their locations, but they can taste the wine, and a lot of people were concerned about wine tasting. But wine tasting, tasting that wine is such an integral part of selling, selling wine, as I talked to a guy the other day about that, I said, you wouldn't go to a restaurant and order a piece of pie if you didn't know what kind of pie you were gonna be getting, you're just not gonna order a piece of pie. Nobody's gonna buy a bottle of wine, typically, without knowing what the wine tastes like. You wouldn't go to a hardware store and buy paint to paint your house if you didn't know what color it was gonna be, so, all those things fit. So the winery is an exception, but it is a specific license from the state, as Nick and I were talking about all ago, it is a family winery, family-owned winery, and they have certain restrictions, they're limited by how much they can produce to be that, to be that family winery, instead of a commercial winery, so, that, that license comes from the state. If you have that license from the state, then you can sell your product at the state, you can offer wine tasting, just, obviously, in limited amounts to tell what that wine tastes like, but no open, open drinks. So we're gonna codify that policy, that's been a standing policy since forever, about alcohol, and that's what this ordinance is, that we are going to bring up today and discuss and pass on, hopefully. If I find my copy, I just had my little hand. Oh, what I do with Nick?
I'm gonna stop giving you things.
No kidding?
That is the only one there is.
It just says exactly what's always been done, it says, whereas ordinance 2012 requires that any transient merchant conducting business in Park County must have a valid TML issued by the Park County Orders Office, and whereas the county commissioners have determined that the sale of alcohol by a transient merchant that is conducting business in Park County, Indiana during the Park County Covered Bridge Festival should be prohibited, with certain exceptions as delineated herein, and whereas, Park County Commissioners have authorized an exception to said prohibition of alcohol sales for family-owned wineries to allow for wine tasting sales, but no sales by the glass or drink, therefore, it's ordained, and it just says, and that we won't issue a TML for that, and if you practice that, like anything, anybody selling anything without a transient merchant license, there is a Class B infraction with a fine of $1,000 per occurrence, per day. So, we just don't want that to happen. We are not opposed, even in the days of getting a winery, a lot of folks are opposed to winery, opposed to alcohol, that was not the issue to me, we have access to alcohol in the county, if someone wants to have a drink with their dinner, we've got restaurants, CVS, gas stations, wherever you want to find alcohol, so we're not anti-alcohol, it's for the festival, you want to have an alcohol-free transient merchant license at the festival time. We're not going around trying to shut down all the, all the bars and all the restaurants, that's not the issue, never was the issue. So that's why that's for. So that's what this ordinance is, so, you guys have any questions on that?
I wouldn't move that.
I would make the motion, then we adopt ordinance 2023-07 prohibiting TML, transient merchants from selling alcohol during the Park County Covered Bridge Festival.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sign the same date, same meeting, too.
Okay. That's down here. All right. Go here first, we'll pass it on, and you can have, she'll need a second, too, that's true.
Then I need a copy of it.
I called you she, you're not here.
Needs published within 30 days. It has to be published within 30 days.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, can.
I just, I just have a question, there is a new Indiana ordinance called, it's referred to as DORA, designated, I can't remember, but it allows you to define an area not cordoned off, not roped off, where people can walk around and freely drink alcohol, have you heard of that?
No.
Yeah, it's called a DORA act, D-O-R-A.
So the state, state will allow that?
State, state will allow, rather than, you used to have to cordon everything off, get a little, serve alcohol, you could get a caterers license.
Right.
And serve alcohol, now they've taken away that, and it is up to the, the town, or the, I guess it's whoever has control of that area, to decide whether they want to issue that.
Right, yeah.
So if Rockville decides, I don't have any interest in this anymore, but if Rockville decides that they're going to allow alcohol to be served on High Street, between, like if you go to the old jail inn and you buy a glass of wine, you can walk on High Street back and forth, which is town property, how does that come into context with, during the bridge festival?
Good question, because you, you would be selling it on site, so they're saying that you can buy it on your, your licensed location, and walk out of the door.
As long as the area's been defined and approved by the town.
I can't answer that question now, that wouldn't include the square, because the square is not town property.
Unless the county laws it.
Yeah, and they could, they could. Typically, those things, well, not typically, always, those things that are outlined by the state can be restricted by, by the county.
Well, the county or the town has to approve it.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Well, I'm saying if the town approves it, but it's during the bridge festival.
It still won't be allowed by TML, though, it'd still be prohibited by TML. If you're not a TML, it wouldn't apply to you.
Right, let's say Mark wants to let people walk around on Jefferson, next to his, his place, during the bridge festival, with alcohol.
He's not a transient merchant.
Right.
Right, but he's gotta go to town, town says, okay, we'll define that as one of these door areas, but it's during the bridge festival.
Should come.
This only applies to transient merchants.
Oh, okay.
Not to anybody that has like a liquor license or anything for a restaurant.
There's a little bit of growing interest about this lately.
Yes, it's unfortunate, but it could be, could be, I don't know why, I don't know why anybody feels they have to have a, have a beer to walk around at the Covered Bridge Festival, I don't know, I don't understand, but people do what they want to do, so, if Rockville was to pass that, then I would guess on Streets Rockville, they can do whatever they want to do. You can't sell on Streets Rockville, but you can drink on Streets Rockville.
Right.
Could be, I would think that'd be a, be a struggle to get passed, but they could.
All right, but he wouldn't be a transient merchant.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
A transient merchant still couldn't do that.
Yeah, right.
But somebody like Mark would be able to, if they passed that.
Okay, all right. All right, Randy's not gonna be here today, everything's sane for him, I think, he didn't give me a list of what the, what they've got done as far as their paving and that goes, but the bridge is underway of being done. The papers from the state have come in for the bridge inspections, so that was, that was approved, we'll need to sign those at some point when that comes in, and that's all really that I got from him. I don't know if Chris O'Brien had anything or not.
No, I just blew his names off.
Jason's not here, Jason Fraser's not here.
He did send an attachment.
Yes, he did. And he does have an issue that we're gonna discuss, but he didn't, didn't make it today, so we'll talk about that, and that's a different issue, different time.
Oh, he didn't, there is one thing, that tort claim that was dismissed, last meeting we had, they filed a new one with new wording that's in federal.
I've got copies of everything, I'll email it to you.
But it's likely to be dismissed also, so.
What I got off the email was this thing.
Yeah, it's nothing to be alarmed about at this point, I guess is what I'm telling you, it's largely the same complaint that was already dismissed.
And I don't remember what rights of his were denied, that he was claiming were denied, so.
Yeah, he had a list of things, but the.
That's okay, I remember coming up and.
The federal court will probably dismiss it also.
Do you want copies of everything? I've got it.
I've got it on my email, Amy sent it for me, to me from the jail.
I didn't see your name on the list, so.
She sent a separate email.
Okay. Let me get back to my idea here, and Julie is not here. Julie is in the process, if you guys recall, of changing billing companies, and she talked to you about billing companies.
I went outside, got cracked the other day.
Good, okay, I thought that was done.
Yep.
You guys, you guys have any other new business, I mean, old business?
Nope.
I would like to ask, West Union Bridge, at the, whatever direction that is, south end of West Union Bridge, a, we don't have access to that, that, that part of the bridge, that side of the bridge is blocked off by a friend of mine owns the property there, he's got crops down there. Up on the bridge, at the doghouse, a large hole has developed over the years, I mean, it's, it's a big hole, somebody could step off into that and get hurt, I'd like to get that fixed. Would it be okay with you guys, if I talk to Dave, if he had access to gravel and sand, which he probably does, because I know that he got the gravel and sand before, close anyway, and if he would do it with his tractor, would you be okay with you if I offered him some pay to, to fill that hole?
I don't have a problem with it.
Prevent that from happening.
Do we have access when we need it? We still have a right of way there, so we don't.
We would have right of way, yeah, as long as, as long as they don't.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Is it groundhog's?
I don't know, I can't really tell, because it's sinking from the top down, so it's going somewhere, but there's nothing on the side, it's concrete on both sides, I don't know how the hole got there.
I was at the bridge not very long ago, I'm right up in the approach, there was a hole that big around, just kept getting bigger, when I went down underneath, there was groundhog's, bored all the way up, but.
And it did not go underneath.
Keep digging.
Go on the bridge side, it could, it could be there, but it's somewhere, but that's what he's done, so if you're okay with that, I'll, I'll negotiate some reasonable cost if he's willing to do it, we just dump some stuff in, so it won't, because we can't get in from the north side, it's got that bar across the north side. And Chad Jenkins asked, if you remember, he and his group have painted over graffiti in covered bridges in the past, and he called and asked if they could do West Union Bridge, I had walked it before, and it's got a little bit of stuff, but not too bad, but I said if not that one, we'd be interested in doing another. So basically, I'm asking if it's okay with you just to give them blanket approval to go, if they find a bridge that needs to be painted for the graffiti, they use that, the same colored, similar, solid stain, the clay color, that we're doing on all bridges, so are you okay with them, I just give them permission to do that?
I don't have a problem with it, if one has graffiti on the inside, they want it covered a little bit.
You're okay with that, Bruce? Then let me, I'll make a motion, so we can have it as a group activity, so if there was a problem, if insurance-wise, it's been, been codified by us, so I'd make a motion that we approve, the group associated with Chad Jenkins to, to paint over graffiti in covered bridges as needed. All, was it a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Just so you know, Convention and Business Commission pays for the supplies and for the, the paint to do that, so, there's no, no cost to the county for anybody doing any of that stuff, so that's good. I usually do that myself, and it's hard to tell somebody they can't go do something instead of me, that's okay, if they want to do that, that is great, they do great job, Janet, Janet Scott's have walked that as well. I think it is the Rotary Association Group in the high schools that do it, I can't remember what they're called, what that group is called, but that's who it is that does that. What is it?
Optimus.
No, not Optimus, something else it's called.
Impact.
Impact, yes, yes, that's what it is, that's who does it, yep, yes. Okay. You guys. Um, we would have right of way, yeah, as long as, as long as they don't have a right of way.
I don't have a problem. Is it groundhog's?
I don't know, I can't really tell, because it's sinking from the top down, so it's going somewhere, but there's nothing on the side, it's concrete on both sides. I don't know how the hole got there.
I was at the bridge not very long ago, I'd run up in the approach. Hole that big around, just kept getting bigger. When I went down underneath, there was groundhog's bored all the way up, but.
And it did not go underneath.
Keep digging.
Go on the bridge side, it, it could, it could be there, but it's somewhere, but that's what he's done. So if you're okay with them, with that, I'll, I'll negotiate some reasonable cost if he's willing to do it, we just dump some stuff in so it won't, because we can't get in from the north side, it's got that bar across the north side. And, um, Chad Jenkins asked, if you remember, he and his group have painted over graffiti and covered bridges in the past. And he called and asked if they could do West Union Bridge. I had walked it before, and it's got a little bit of stuff, but not too bad. But I said, if not that one, we'd be interested in doing another. So basically, I'm asking if it's okay with you just to give them blanket approval to go, if they find a bridge that needs to be painted for the graffiti, they use that, the same colored, similar, um, solid stain, the clay color that we're doing in all bridges? So are you okay with them, like, just giving them permission to do that?
If one has graffiti on the inside, they want to cover it a little bit.
You okay with that, Bruce? Then let me, I'll make a motion so we can have it as a group activity. So if there was a problem, if insurance wise, it's been, been codified by us, so I'd make a motion that we approve, um, the group associated with, um, Chad Jenkins to, to paint over graffiti and cover bridges as needed. I'll, was it a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Just so you know, Convention and Business Commission pays for the supplies and for the, the, um, paint to do that, but so, there's no, no cost to the county for anybody doing any of that stuff, so that's good. I usually do that myself, and it's hard to tell somebody they can't go do something instead of me, that's okay, if they want to do that, that is great. They do great job, um, Janet, Janet Scott's a wolf at that as well. I think it is the Rotary Associated Group in the high schools that do it, I can't remember what they're called, what that group is called, but that's who it is that does that. What is it?
Optimus.
No, not Optimus, something else it's called. I just don't.
Impact.
Impact, yes, yes, that's what it is, that's who does it, yeah. Yes. Okay, um, you guys, if you don't have any new business, we'll move on to public. Mandy.
Hey, hi.
Geez, smack it again.
I'm here. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Rockville Bicentennial Committee. It's just a committee of two. Um, the only reason I'm here is so I can ask permission for the town of Rockville to have a banner put on the northeast corner of the courthouse lawn when Main Street does not have anything going on.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to, like, just to display throughout the year of twenty twenty-four, just to let people know, hey, we're celebrating our bicentennial.
I can't speak for anybody else, I, I'm certainly fine with the banner. I'm not fine with the banner being there all the time. I like sometimes having nothing on the, on the courthouse lawn, we get a lot of pictures, a lot of people saying it.
Right.
Could we, could you do it on some schedule, like maybe, a year's a long time?
Uh, it is, it is a long time. I mean, what do you suggest?
I don't know. How big is it?
Uh, the banner itself is eight foot by three foot nine, so eight foot long.
Yeah, and put them up on the fence pole, I mean, on the fence post?
Yeah, yeah.
A week a month, or a weekend a month, or something like that? Why do you, I don't think you'd have to have it so much during the week for local people, but maybe the weekend.
Right, absolutely.
Would a weekend a month be enough to do it?
Sure. I mean, unless Main Street has something going on, I'm not going to take away from Main Street, but, um, yeah.
What do you think, is that enough?
As long as I think that's sufficient.
So we can do Friday through Monday?
Why don't we just, why don't we just do this with you? I, I wouldn't care about having a motion to do it unless we had to for insurance wise, but just leave it up to you, you know all we want, and if you just do it, so you can flex it around your schedule, so.
So we could do like a Monday, or Friday through Monday.
Yeah, so, so if Main Street has something going on.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to take away from that.
You can do another weekend.
Yeah.
Instead of us writing down every weekend if we're going to do it, you just, you just work that out.
To your discretion, or to my discretion.
Okay, that'd be my motion.
And, and if something comes up that.
Yeah, yeah.
We allow somebody to use it.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, because, I'm sorry, it's completely fun, I just wanted to recognize Rockville as.
Sure, I think it's a great idea, I think it's great. And we'd like to be involved with the, with the time capsule we're digging up to, and might include the historical side with that as well, so I mean, they, they might want to be involved as well. I think the biggest celebration we have, you just have to know what you're going to find in those time capsules.
Rhonda, Rhonda, the V F J U's taking care of the time capsule project, part of the project, and Josh and I are taking care of the Veterans Memorial.
Is it July, is that what it is?
What?
The time capsule was put in in July?
Um, I think we're gonna, well, I think we're gonna try to open it during Main Street block party.
Okay, great, great.
And then, and it will, um, I think the fair board has allowed us to display what's, um, and buried in the time capsule now at the fair.
Nice.
Yeah.
And I don't know why we couldn't display that in courthouse too, once the fair room was, was done with it as well.
Um, are you offering that?
I have to call it that.
I mean, we, we can totally, I think it'd be awesome, that would be really cool to, yeah, to display.
We let other displays, we have art, art every time, time, we have information.
So should we cross that bridge when we get there, or, I mean?
I'd make plans for it anytime you want to make plans. Maybe talk about what kind of boards you want, but we don't know what's in there, so.
Yeah, we don't know.
If you just need a table, or if you need something else, but we, we can work that out.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think the consensus is, yeah, well, we'll do that, so figure out how you want to do it.
Okay, okay, and I'm sure there'll be some advertising in the newspaper and such as far as, um, taking what Rhonda's gonna do to take applications or suggestions for, to what's, to go into the new time capsule.
Great, great. That's too easy.
Yeah, way too easy.
Okay, so we, we approve you're doing, and now you just do it at your discretion.
Absolutely.
I understand it's probably about a weekend a month, whatever works for you.
Sounds good, okay. I really hate to leave y'all, but I'm going to.
I think, if you check your application, I think you have to stay the whole time.
No, I don't like it. It's been a long night, it's been a long night.
Okay, alright, see you, thanks.
Have a good night, guys.
Yeah. Alright, great.
Yes, I, I think Patty and Holly was asked to be here at this meeting about the bathrooms. Um, I have the two certificates of insurance.
Okay.
Which evidently, uh, the county has always been listed as an additional insured, since we use the courthouse squares all the time.
I don't know how, what the, what the, how often those have to be renewed, Nick would be know whether or not.
Every year we renew our insurance, so it's.
Okay.
And every year we put Park County on there, so I'm not sure if that's what you mean. But she had also said, because I talked to Don twice, and he knows nothing about it.
No, uh, remember, you've been in a couple times, we talked this time, but we need to sit down and get an agreement on how that's going to be worked, how the cleanup's going to be, um, who's going to be responsible for what, we just have to have some kind of agreement on that. We just can't give permission, that certificate of insurance, all that tells us is that there's damage that, insurance wise, we're covered.
Right.
We don't know anything, any kind of agreement with you on who's going to clean, who's going to be responsible for.
Okay, we have that, so.
So let's create that, and we'll, and we'll, and we'll.
Do you want us to create that, or you want?
Well, Nick, if, if Nick wants to do.
Nick, you need to tell us what you need.
So then what's the intention, that they're going to clean, or?
Yeah, yeah, they'll be.
Maintain, open the bathrooms on Saturday and Sunday.
One hours.
That's why we need to decide all those things, so I'm not interested in having it open at night, but what are you looking at?
No, no, we're looking at something like ten to six during the primary shopping hours, is what it is.
Okay.
I know Patty had, she's the one who volunteered to have her and her staff do it, so she's going to set the hours. I can find out these hours that she wants to have open.
We can, we can just make it, make it a, a, a range, and she can operate within that range, whatever she wants to do.
Well, she needs to, we need to have specific hours, because she needs to tell retail establishments, so they don't send people over there.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, we can set a range of ten to six, if she chooses to do twelve before, that's up to them, how did I even want to do that? We can just set a range and, and.
Yeah, we're ready, whatever you need to do next.
Okay, so.
I'll put a contract together on that.
Okay.
Where you guys can sign.
Okay. And I have looked, since we've had this discussion for a couple years, in fact, really a long time since Kentucky was kicked out of business, every place Gail and I go, we, we, we go to the, the town squares that have courthouses and, and see about restrooms. Most tourism areas have restrooms, provided, they're not in part of the courthouse, they are not allowed in the courthouse after hours. And I was, I was interested to find out if we were being in line with what everybody else does and, and it was, I've talked to the commissioners, and they would never allow just the general public come in after courthouse hours because of liability, and that's what our insurance company told us once we found out. But I think we can work this out, and Nick can conclude about who's going to be liable for what, and.
What's, the document he has is identical to the issues, make calls.
Yes, same thing. We're just listed as, as a second insured, so if somebody sues them for something, they're going to sue the county too, and their insurance has to cover us. But my question is, I don't know what the limit is on this, is there a limitation of up to how much money, and then responsible?
Each occurrence is one million dollars.
Okay.
Damage to rented premises would be fifty, um, medical would be five thousand, personal injury would be a million, aggregate would be two million, um, products would be two million.
Because the real issue is, it's not a matter of he'd stint you with the bathrooms or that, so we are exposing the taxpayers of the county to liability for a town function, and I don't know how I would justify someone living up in Tangier that we're taking on responsibility, so you can have, um, happy tourists with bathrooms, because the stores don't have their own bathrooms for public use. Why is it, they're going to ask me, why is it on them to provide bathrooms for local businesses when they don't, when they don't bother to provide their own? That's a tough question to answer.
We've looked into that a little bit too. It turns out there are some Indiana laws that require stores to have bathrooms.
Yes, there are.
Um, there's all kinds of exceptions, and if there's more than, less than three employees, I think, you don't have to let people use it.
Right.
If somebody comes in and asks you to use your bathroom, you are legally obligated to let them use it.
That is my understanding.
Unless you're the only employee there, or if it's not safe for them to go back to use them.
That is my understanding, I can give you a little story. God, I started telling a little story, I was in, in the restroom at the courthouse, gentleman came from one of the local stores, antique store, and he was hot, and he was just saying stuff, like, he didn't know who I was, that I was anybody, he's just talking. And I said, what, what are you talking about? He said, well, he just went to this, uh, store and spent several hundreds, if not thousands of dollars buying stuff, he's a dealer, and so he bought a lot of stuff. And she had a restroom there, and he asked me to use the restroom, no, she wouldn't allow him. He said, if that had happened before, he said, I wouldn't have bought a thing from, from her, but that was it, he, she just said, no, it was the one across the street, so he had to walk across the street to the courthouse. It was during the day, so it was okay, it was open, so he could do that, but he was really upset, so, happens.
I wish we had another solution.
Well, I tell you, the, I've been asked before about the restrooms down at P C I, and that's what they're for, they're called, the restrooms are open all day, but that's a long way from the courthouse, I mean, it's a long way from the square. Um, there is a couple of buildings going to become available on the square, I understand, one would be the town hall, um.
We've talked to the town about that.
Okay, so maybe there's possibilities there, something like that. We're willing to work with it, we, we don't want to be obstinate, but again, I'm, we're just putting that liability on every taxpayer in the county if, if something goes wrong.
I even thought the new parking lot for the town, that maybe there could be bathrooms there.
Well, that'd be great, too bad.
But there was.
Are there grants for that type of thing, for, for public?
I, I don't know.
There's so many grants out there now through the state for tourism activities, creating, creating locations, creating places. Sidney might be able to help you with that, but I know there are funds, well, and that wasn't, that the P C I is using, that the, that tourist locations funds to create the, to redo, repaint the. Tourist center down there.
The depot.
Yeah, the depot, they're getting funds for that, I bet there's funds available for public restrooms for that type of thing too.
There might be. Yeah. There's, there's one thing to build them, the other thing is to maintain.
Absolutely, yeah.
I talked to the people down in Casey, Illinois, and they have the same issue, they don't have public restaurants, and they are looking at setting up some kind of an annuity, so they would be taken care of in perpetuity.
Nice.
Instead of just building them and trying to figure out.
Sure. And there are probably services that would do that kind of thing, or even local people that would go in and clean them, I don't know if he, are they, would they be open all night, or just during the work hours, I don't know, we have to slide.
I know the ones at the depot are open twenty-four hours.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
They're not always under the best shade. If everybody's ever used them, they're not in the best shade.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that the town is not going to maintain them on weekends during the bridge.
Okay.
The P C I is trying to figure out how to deal with that.
I was going to see what we have in the office.
We just need updated version, that one expires August fifteenth.
Oh, okay. That's probably, I got this, I got this on before.
I assume there's a new one probably.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll get some new. And that's why we always request them, because I don't know when, when they're valid, not valid themselves.
They're supposed to send us notice when it expires or whatever, the insurance company is, I don't know whether they did or not.
Okay.
I haven't gotten anything, but I was going to look to see what one I have at the office.
Lot of times it says that, and then they don't actually.
Do it.
But Greg would have access to it probably somewhere, I would assume.
Do you guys have any questions on having them open on, on weekends from ten to six?
No, I mean, again, I just think we've got to, you mentioned it, I, I could rehash, but we've got to address the insurance situation, because, you know, we just can't expose ourselves to, to.
They're all in their stairs, there's no, well, there is handicap accessible, because we do leave that open during a festival for the handicap, to have a handicap accessible from the west side. But, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's something, we, we get this worked out, Dan, you got any, any help, questions on that? Alright. Then I think the consensus is, we'll get it done, it's just a matter of Nick putting us in a comfortable position. That's why we're giving them big bucks, so he'll do that kind of thing. Alright, anything else, Greg, or that it?
That's it.
Alright, Becky Stanley.
Hi.
Tell us what you got.
Okay, so, my husband and I own a small airbrush tattoo business. In Rock, we found out there's a little, a young man named Jacob Reynolds, he's fourteen, he's an eighth grader at Park Hardest Middle School. He is currently in Bradley Children's Hospital with stage three Hodgkin's lymphoma. We're trying to organize a fundraiser, and we've actually had a lot of, um, people and businesses reach out to us.
Lot of local businesses.
Yeah, local, local. Um, we would like to, on September twenty-third, have the fundraiser on the square. Um, it's not going to be a whole, I'm, there's going to be someone doing cotton candy, face painters, we're going to be, um, uh, airbrush tattooing, we have, um, someone that, that's willing to come out and donate, uh, time to, to help with all this, but then we have a lot of businesses that have donated, a lot of things that we can auction, and everything, nobody is making any money from this, it's all going to the family.
Right, it's a nice thing.
Thank you.
So what you need from us, are there any risks in the square?
Permission, just permission.
Do you need electricity for, um, for any of this?
Yeah, if there was an outside.
There is, there is, yeah, and Don can help with the cords, if you need to do that, we just need to know that ahead of time. How about water, would you need water, run a hose at all for any places?
No.
Not that I'm, on a. Not that, um, Rhonda?
We might, just for hand washing.
Okay.
Um, or painting, washing.
I'm assuming you're going to be on the north side, facing 36 for most of the traffic?
I was thinking northwest side.
Northwest, on the west side? Okay, that's fine. Um, we run hoses down from there for the bridge festival, so it's just a matter of letting us know, so Don can know to get a hose out for you and hook it up. I don't know if there's outside hose access, or if he has to come up the inside and run it through the window, I'm not sure about that. That's, that's all we really need to know.
Okay.
All right, you guys have any questions on that?
We contacted about safety, like to maybe even walk off the street that day.
That'd be the town.
The town.
Is there a motion to approve September 23rd?
They meet, they meet tonight, Nick.
Yeah, town hall in about 15 minutes.
15 minutes, if you want to run over there, try to jump on their agenda, but, yeah, to block the town streets off, you've got to get the town permission to do that.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reapprove, uh.
September 23rd.
The use of the courthouse lawn on September 23, 23, for a fundraiser for this show and I'll second that.
All fair, say aye.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
If you need, if you have anything else you need, let us, let us know.
Absolutely.
Uh, Don, Don Pruner is the custodian.
I will get him head to.
She's going to let him know about it coming up, so if you need, uh, electric or if you need water, just, uh, he'll take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing, it's a nice thing. It is a nice thing. It is a great community.
I have a comment or question. We, we have a dunk tank. The only reason I hesitate to volunteer is because I know what that does to insurance on the courthouse square.
Since we've approved it, you're going to be covered under our insurance, the way I understand it. There's no significant risk, I don't think, involved with the dunk tank. It's not going to hurt the, the grass either, I might not know about that, but as far as somebody that hears, there's no risk for a dunk tank.
You might want to contact your insurance before you want, yeah, but other than that.
I know Bounce House has been to create extra insurance for that.
Yeah. I was going to say, sometimes we can get a rider insurance too.
I would recommend that you get two commissioners to be in the dunk tank.
Can we get your phone number? That would be great.
Another option is if they close the street.
That would be great, we charge like a dollar a throw and, and.
Yeah, uh, Danny had a great idea.
If you go to town meeting, they decide to let you close the street, it might be a better location on the street, on good flat area instead of, of course.
They're probably more likely to let you do the south side than they are the west side, I guess, because of apartments.
Okay.
Yeah.
But just.
Would the south side work for you for the fundraiser? That's what.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Because then you're not dealing with the apartment complex people.
That makes sense. And sir, what's your, can I get your information?
Greg said he'd be in the dunk tank.
All right.
Well, please, for now, can I have a couple more minutes?
Yep.
I just want to share some. Thank you. Let me make sure I have Nisa's phone number, he's going to sign you up. Um, I'm just going to hand out a couple of these. This is my program in Park County, and it is free to families, and I don't know that people know about it, so I'm, while I'm here, I'm just going to spread the word.
Okay.
You have to excuse my professional dress today, but I did a home visit with family in a tent today, so it's a little warm out there. Um, but we are a free program to families, and we just help them up with resources. Sometimes we help pay the first month's rent if we can get them into a place.
Yes.
Um, I take a lot of kids to Indianapolis for doctor's appointments. Um, I've helped about six families here recently get a kid's I E Ps after they've gotten a diagnosis when I've taken them to Peyton Manning or Riley's.
That's great.
Mental health professional. Um, I'm also the one that puts up the blue banner in the courthouse lawn, so thank you for allowing that. Every April, we talk about child, um, child safety.
Yep.
Um, but I just like to spread the word when I see a group of people.
Does Jessica have a copy of that?
Jessica? Okay, there you go. Um, but that also has, like, several ways that you can get in top, contact with our program.
Yeah.
Um, it's been in Park County for years, and when I was leaving D C S to look for a different job, I found this on Indeed, and I thought maybe it was one of those scam things, I was like, what is this? Um, but it's been here for a while, um, and I was super excited about it when I heard about it.
And it don't cost the families at all?
It doesn't cost them anything, and I leave them where they are.
That's great.
Yeah.
See, that's what, that's what's good about Park County, it just is, you know, you hear the noisy ones and, and the dumb ones. But there's so many good people doing good stuff, just like you guys are, too. You didn't have to do this fundraiser, but you can't go.
She doesn't even know the family. This lady does not even know his family.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, it's just, it's a great place, it just is, so, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, if you, anybody has any questions about my program, feel free to reach out to me, because I am a local Yoko.
Don't worry about the Yoko part, but you are local, yeah.
And, uh, I would love to talk more about it, if somebody has a business or a group that you think I might be able to do a presentation with. I'm also a car seat inspector, so I've been trained to do that, so if anybody has, need house that need, I love to make sure that the babies are safe in the rentals, so I can also, if they are not safe in the car seat that they have, I can replace that, so.
Have you run ads or anything in the paper explaining your program?
You know, I've done a few things, like on Park County chatter, because that seems to be a big thing.
I'll, I'll talk to Jessica about that, see what we can, see what we can do.
I talked to the judge.
He knows.
And there's.
Yeah, yeah, I've met with him, Lexi, a couple of different times, because the only time I can't serve a family, because we're more of like a prevention program, so the only time I can't serve a family is if there's an open D C S case.
Gotcha.
Or if they have a juvenile probation case.
Sure.
Because at that point, they're already past the limit to where.
Yep.
We can help. Um, it's been proven if we can lower that family's stress level, and then that makes the parents better, parents.
Yep.
And so that's what my job is, and I think it's a super fun gig, even if I don't always like the circumstances I'm going into.
That's great, I've known you for several years in your family, so there's no surprise that you're doing good things. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, we also, when I talk about not going into fun places, where I've just been bugs, we pay A Mark every month to go somewhere.
That's great.
But it's free.
That's great.
So I'm just trying to get the word out to families, so that way they know that we're out there, because these families are going to school and having these issues, and if I can help, then.
Appreciate it.
I want to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the, good of the meeting? No? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.